All right, I have six o'clock, so I'll call the Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025 Long Lake Township Planning Commission meeting to order. First, I'd like to invite everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Wilson, Wagner, Fox, Ryan, Murphy, Fisher, and Bagheera is absent and is due.
All right. Next item's approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Bob, we have a late correspondence that's on your desks from July 21st from Crew, so that should be added to your agenda.
Okay, under Correspondence. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Support.
It's moved by Murphy and supported by Juan to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, agenda's approved. Next is our conflict of interest statement. Does anybody have a conflict with tonight's business? Please state such. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment period. It's our first public comment period, so anybody can address us for up to three minutes. Go ahead. Just need your name and address, please, for the record.
Kay Gallagher-Ingerham, 5170 Jack's Trail. During your ongoing discussions on the activity centers, please keep in mind that the residents of Long Lake Township have been very vocal about not wanting growth in the way of big box stores, and that you have an obligation to the residents, not to the business owners, to ensure that we keep our area as rural as possible. We do not want a Dollar Tree, Dollar General, a Family Dollar, or any business comparable to it. I would also like to add to that list, no AT&amp;T or Verizon phone stores. My family has been living in Long Lake Township for six generations, and I also own and operate a business in our township.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now's your chance.
Hi, everyone. My name is Casey Caut, C-A-U-G-H. I live at 2101 Gina Marley and actually in Gronn. I have a vested interest in 9954 North Long Lake Road. I'm just here tonight just to, I know you guys are going to be revisiting the activity centers. I want you to know that we're here as business owners. We're not the only ones. There's others in the House, too. We felt very blindsided last time, as many of you know, by what was going on, partially our fault, partially we feel like it should have been communicated. So we just want you to know that we're here. We'd like to be part of the discussion. I spent the last couple of days going through the entire subplan. There's no conversation in that whole subplan that was put together after several meetings about rezoning. As a matter of fact, the last page specifically says we do not recommend rezoning. So we weren't expecting it. So the last two days, I've gone through all of your agendas and your minutes of all of your meetings since then. To the best of what I can account from the minutes, it looks like the one meeting where it was discussed to rezone the property was held at 1:00 on a Tuesday afternoon, or I'm sorry, a Wednesday afternoon. So I'd just ask that if you are going to start talking about those changes and the zoning, keep in mind that a lot of this affects business owners, and 1:00 on a Wednesday afternoon is just really, really hard for most of us. So if you're going to do some special meetings and those things, we want to be part of the conversation. We don't want it to be contentious. We want to be part of this. So please keep that in mind so that we can be part of it, you know, maybe ideally, some, a time that would work better for the business owners. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? There'll be another period at the end of the meeting, too, so. All right, we'll close this public comment period at 6:05. Moving on to our next item, approval of the minutes. We have a minutes from our June 24th meeting and then a set of minutes from our tree preservation ad hoc meeting. So let's take the regular meeting ones first. Is there any edits or adjustments that we need to make? I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes if there aren't any adjustments. Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion by Murphy and support by Bob to approve the minutes of our June 24th meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next is the tree hock meeting Most of us weren't there, so I guess we just are looking to accept them and...
Sorry, first time with a mic. The Planning Commission by law state that any subcommittee needs to submit their minutes to the full board, so that's why you guys see the tree preservation ad hoc meeting minutes. Commissioner Murphy was the only commissioner in attendance, so I don't expect there to be any changes unless she has any, and then you can accept them as being presented to you.
So I just look for a motion to accept the minutes. Is there, I have a motion from Murphy to accept the ad hoc meeting minutes. Is there support? I heard support from Dan Paulson. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor of accepting those minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, those are accepted. Postpone business, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Pending business, none. So we're up to new business. Item A, accessory dwelling units review and discussion. I'll turn it back to Cody.
So this is on your agenda after, under the new business, because we're kind of taking a new, a new look at this. ADUs have been a topic of discussion for some time for the Planning Commission. After last month's meeting, there was some discussion about coming, coming back with some further detail regarding architectural design, size, conditional land use versus permitted, and what our next steps were going to be. So the action you took at the last meeting was to turn down the zoning ordinance amendment draft that was put in front of you so that we could take a closer look at it with the future plan of holding another public hearing once that language has been fleshed out a little further for our review. So in preparation for that, staff put together a brief summary of where we've been so far in your packet, and then the attachments with that summary are example ordinance language that we can have further discussion on, as well as an analysis about the zoning district minimum lot area and how many parcels meet that distance. Sorry, I can't tell if you guys can hear me or not. Is that better? Okay. So I performed that analysis using our GIS software, and then I also included our Long Lake Township zoning map. So I'll just kind of walk you guys through real quick those changes for our discussion this evening. To the ordinance language, we originally only had one definition for ADU, which has gone largely unchanged, but we've also added the attached and detached definitions to the ADU. So if we decide, or you decide, to treat them differently or treat them by district, we have the ability to do that as zoning ordinance. The first two items, the intent and regulation and conditions, are texts that you've seen previously discussing those topics, but the main changes for today's discussion was on item number three, which was design requirements, and then I pulled them out for architectural standards, size requirements, and parking. The architectural standards, that is the verbiage we use for multifamily and two-family dwelling units, talking about architectural. We can run through that real quick. It just says scaled elevation drawings depicting architectural features shall be provided in an area predominantly single-family homes, and accessory dwelling shall be designed to resemble one-unit dwelling and shall include architectural details found on the majority of the dwellings in the neighborhood, so that accessory dwellings is consistent with the aesthetic character of existing buildings. That is currently how we deal with architectural design. Moving forward, just to kind of knock one off, each off before we talk about them further. The size requirement options, one and two specifically treat attached and detached dwellings differently based on their sizing, and it has the 960 square feet that we've discussed before being the max for those items, with no minimum for the attached, and the minimum for the detached being at least a 24 by 24-foot living area. That's in our, most of our districts. The other option, I'm sorry, with that option, we have the ADU being attached to an accessory building or a garage and treating that garage as an accessory building like we've discussed before. So you could build a 960-square-foot detached unit, and then if you built a garage on top of it, it would then be treated as an accessory building. So that's how we've discussed it before. The new option to discuss is the letter 2C, which talks about a detached accessory building being treated as one unit for a measurement garage or living space and that having a total square footage of 960. So it treats it a little differently than we've talked about, and then parking is also the same as previous. I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but just to finish out the items, I was also asked to bring forth what other standards would be required if you decide to make some districts conditional land uses for ADUs, and those are in the next couple pages. It talks about the standards for granting conditional land use approval, which we've seen before from applications previous, which list off a plethora of items that you have to compare it against when considering it. And there's also section 24.5, which is standards for granting a site plan approval, because if you have a CLU, you have to have a site plan attached to it. And then lastly, is the zoning district minimum lot area analysis. So I was asked to try to figure out how many lots in each zoning district are conforming based on size to our current zoning ordinance. So I'll walk you through the results of that. So the table lists each zoning district on the left-hand side, and I tried to coordinate the colors with our zoning map so it's easy to correlate the two. I say approximate number of parcels, because there are some parcels in our township that have two different zoning districts. So how I did it was I calculated the centroid of each parcel and then pulled whatever zoning district that centroid falls in. So whatever the center of that parcel is, that's what I put it into for zoning district. Then I list out the minimum lot size for those, and then the approximate number of parcels that conformed to that. So for example, the Conservation Recreation District has approximately 223 parcels. It has to have a minimum lot size of five acres from current zoning. We have approximately 149 parcels that fit that size, and that percentage is 67 or 2/3. So that's the analysis that was performed. I also add the caveat that the actual number in practice is going to be slightly smaller, because we only have a field based on assessed size, so I can't incorporate easements that go across it. So if you have a one-acre parcel that has part of a right-of-way easement, your net versus gross is going to be a little bit different. So our actual numbers are going to be slightly smaller than what's existent. And then, like I said, if you want to see that geographically, those colors shall, or should match up to the zoning map that I've included. So I'll turn it back to you, and if you want to walk through each item individually, as far as architectural size, condition, and any conformance, we can do that, or however you'd like to handle that moving forward.
Thanks, Cody. Does anybody have any initial comments or thoughts, questions? I think Dan had a question out and emailed and...
Yeah, so Commissioner Paulson emailed me, and I meant to touch on that. Thank you. There is a definition. So when we look at item B2C in the example language, it's under design requirements, there's a description of livable floor area, and that's defined in the zoning ordinance. It can be found in the definition section, and that definition for livable floor area is a total floor area of a dwelling unit used or intended to be used for permanent habitation, including what not limited to sleeping, cooking, personal sanitation, but excluding storage space, attics, garages, and any below-grade room without an ingress egress window. So that intent when writing that was meant to be that we're going to take the total livable floor area, so your living room, your bedroom, your bathroom, add that square footage to the garage, and that can't be more than 960, because that was my interpretation of our discussion from previous. So that's what that option stands for, or is supposed to communicate.
So the conditional land use standards, we were kind of thinking that if we wanted to allow bigger, is that kind of where we were going with that?
We can. That's an option. So there's, there's two ways that this can be included in the zoning ordinance. One is under the section called general provisions, provisions? That's Article 4, I believe. And that just means if you have a permitted use by right, you just go to your general provisions, and those are the standards you have to build it to. So for example, a single-family home is in general provisions, because you can build it in almost every of our zoning districts. If something becomes conditional at some point, that use would then be added to Section 19, which is conditional uses, and you can set a more rigorous set of standards for it, or different set of standards if you so choose. So that's why it's too different. But if you go through the conditional land use process, there's those other items that have to be considered, so like conformance to the master plan and those types of things that you guys normally do on a CLU process.
Does anybody have any thoughts on any of the new items on this topic tonight so far?
I want to maybe take a different direction. I know we talked about attached and detached AEDs. I think, and it was brought up at the last meeting, that we should take this slow. And I think it would be good for us to take a look at primary attached AEDs to begin with, that they keep the, keep the control on it, I would say, send this into the term of, direct language.
Can I ask what your concern is?
Mismatch.
In, in style or design?
Well, not so much design and style. Just think, keep the control on it. A lot of communities, surrounding communities, right there, looking for housing, desperately looking for housing. I hate to see that put in the mix of our township. There's actually a conference open in Mackinac, where they're going to be discussing AEDs, housing, that type of thing. I, it's just a thought. I thought it would be something that we could take a look at, start off slow, and we could readdress it, just kind of, you know, down the road to see how it works.
I guess I'm not understanding what you're going to control, but, other than it being attached or detached.
I think the township would have more of a handle on it. If it's attached to the primary resident or the homeowners living in the property.
Well, I'll, I'll remind everybody that our, we had a subcommittee that took a look at this over the winter, I think, towards that time. So they, you know, is a smaller group, have spent some time going through things and trying to vet issues and that nature. So I, I know Dennis, you were on that, right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And I guess I just look for thoughts from Max and Dan that were on that, too, that, you know, how do the, how do the, the current standards and what's presented kind of align with the, what came out of the committee?
I'm not sure that we spoke about the difference between attached and detached that aggressively, but we, we did, I think we looked at both from my, my standpoint, you know. But I, I think that, I agree with the fact that we can make changes in that, but I think we can, like I said before, dissect this forever, and we, we do have the ability, if we see something that isn't working, to change it. We've done things with short-term rentals. I think we can pick this apart for a long time. I think we have the basis of what we need, and we're very close to moving forward. I just don't know that you're going to see, see any advantage in all attached, but I think you have to leave some of that up to the property owners and what, you know, or maybe you do it by lot size. I don't know. I think you're going to get into a can of worms there.
I would agree with Dennis on that. I don't think that there's a real difference in if you're, if you're afraid you're going to get more people to move in, whether it's attached or detached. We're already limiting it to the lots that meet existing zoning and are conforming. And we, we looked at five or six other ordinances from communities surrounding us in northern Michigan, and none of the other communities, I don't think, designated the difference between whether it was attached or detached accessory dwelling unit.
From my perspective, most of our conversation, my understanding was that it was primarily geared toward a detached type of ADU. You know, one of the chief goals of this, of this proposed ordinance, and what I think the community asked us for, was to provide workforce, workforce housing. And I think that, you know, if we're talking about workforce housing, we're talking about either primarily young people, maybe with a child or two. I think it would be difficult for, it would be difficult for me to envision them moving into an attached ADU. I think they would be much more comfortable and much more likely to take advantage of a detached ADU. It just gives them more privacy and more of it. I mean, it's basically a rental unit. But given that one of the chief goals was to provide workforce housing, I think that detached is an important part of that.
That's absolutely correct. Rentals, we're going to turn to rentals. Not in all cases, but primarily.
Well, right, and I think that was one of the goals of the proposed ordinance, to provide workforce housing, which by definition would be rentals, certainly not short-term rentals, but certainly rentals.
I thought we started out, it was the mother-in-law, partner, family coming into town.
That was, that was part of the goal, but yes.
I remember we were discussing, we're having trouble even here in this township, finding housing for firemen, and that, and that's, was a big part of it. And yes, it could be used as we get older with our families and that. So there's some advantages there. I think we discussed all those areas of it. I don't think there was any one specific use for it, other than, or concern, other than making sure that we weren't going to be having short-term rentals. And I think we've got that pretty well covered.
Hey, Sherri, can you turn your mic on? I don't know if it's on or not. It's hard to hear you.
Let's see, is this better? Seems like it.
I'm going to try. Thanks. At the last meeting, can you hear me? Okay. At the last meeting, it was discussed, we're going to take this slowly. So I guess any clarification as to what, what that means?
Well, I think we took a step back just to kind of go through the questions that, you know, Kevin and others had and vet through, sort through those, and I think the, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it warrants sending it back to a committee level or anything like that. I think we're, we're past that. We're just, now we're trying to, you know, come to a point where we can push it along and get a legal review and get a public hearing held.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe there's misunderstanding regarding short-term rentals and rentals in general, and I think the ordinance doesn't allow, or wouldn't, this, this change wouldn't allow ADUs to be short-term rentals. So maybe, you know, we need to make that clear to folks.
There's no way to place it. Or regulate it, per se.
Well, I think we do have it regulated, and I, maybe you can clarify this. So we do have, we were looking, I think, at Lake Residential. There's a couple of places that right now could be grandfathered in with the short-term rental, or how is that working? Clarification. We had a little bit of overlap.
Correct. So right now, short-term rentals are regulated by a police power ordinance that's handled by the township board. It is also regulated, or it's put in practice by our ordinance enforcement officer who runs the program for that, licensing those permits and also enforcing them. Following up with him regarding this verbiage, the way we have it written, is there are currently two existing non-conforming lots that have a... two existing non-conforming lots that have an, an A D U on the property that were built before 1979, so they're legally existing, non-conforming, that have a short-term rental permit for the principal dwelling unit. So the way that the verbiage is written and has been written, it says unless they fail to apply and secure a permit every year that gap goes forward, they're going to lose the right to do so. So right now, if you built an A D U under the current language, you would not be able to have a short-term rental. You'd be giving up your right to short-term rent your property. So because there's two existing, the thought was you didn't want to usurp that current use. And so the way to round that is they're allowed to continue to do it until they fail to get that permit, and then they would no longer be allowed to do that on those two parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was a little, a little confused on the language, but it makes sense now.
It is perfect legalese.
Yeah.
Yeah. The township attorney did review it and had a few changes to it, but that is what we settled on.
Okay. So the, the non, the existing non-conforming ones, they currently have accessory dwelling units that they use as short-term rentals?
They use the principal dwelling for their short-term. But the way we have it written is you would not be allowed to use the A D U or the principal dwelling as a short-term rental. So if you built one, you would not have the ability to do that regardless. So that was, somebody didn't build one, live in the A D U, and then try to rent the principal. The goal is not to try to add S T Rs, is try to add housing for younger and older folks who can't necessarily afford a house in Long Lake Township.
How about the architectural standards? Does anybody have any question or comments on those items? They're pretty basic and generic, and I think match what's already in the ordinance as, as you mentioned, for multifamily.
It matches verbatim, except for A D U is taking the place of multifamily, and that leaves the interpretation, if it's a use by right, it puts that interpretation on the zoning administrator to determine that the aesthetic character of existing building matches what the new building would be.
Cody, the question that I had about livable area is that two C says, you know, whichever's less, including garage and livable area, um, under that definition, couldn't somebody build a 576 square foot garage, house, have a garage that included the rest up to 1960, but then have non-livable area like an unheated mudroom or mechanical room, and expand the size of the unit in that way?
Um, potentially. So it'd be non-habitable space, so it'd be like a utility closet or something like that. So yeah, potentially, somebody could have a thousand square foot A D U at 40 feet, square feet of, there, there's probably a better way to tidy, tidy that up. I think a detached accessory dwelling, so not exceed 960 square feet or exceed total floor area, uh, yeah, there might be a way to make that a little more shored up as far as the total floor area can't be more than 960, but I just wanted to make sure that who is reading it understood that that included the garage.
Gotcha. Um, the other thing is, what about if somebody wants a 960 square foot house and a 960 square foot deck?
Um, decking is regulated under a completely separate portion of the zoning ordinance.
So it wouldn't be limited under this, under the A D U ordinance?
No, not that, not to my understanding.
I think the language for architectural amendments that mirrors the rest of the ordinance is fine. To revisit the attached versus non-attached, in my mind, an attached A D U, you can already do that. I mean, people already have their mother-in-law living with them in their house. What does that mean? I mean, you can have a second kitchen, you can have a second, you know?
Sure.
So you, you can already do that. You don't need this ordinance for that.
Not necessarily. So our current zoning ordinance, as long as there's a free-flowing pathway through the house, it's not considered a separate dwelling unit. So if you have a full kitchen upstairs and a full kitchen downstairs, you technically don't have an A D U if you have a stairway that's not blocked off. So an attached A D U more commonly would be like two separate entrances.
Right.
Um, but both would have to have complete independent living facilities within them.
Correct. Yeah. I guess I'm, just so everyone knows where I stand, I think you should allow both attached and detached. And to comment on Sherry's comments regarding slow roll in the ordinance, I really don't know how you do that either. Make an ordinance or you don't, are you going to make the ordinance for one type of zoning wait a year and see how many people build them, and then add another one, and take you 10 years to get the ordinance in place? That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if you're trying to figure out what the results are going to be, like Dennis said, you're going to find that out in the first year probably anyway, and you can always change the ordinance if, if you're seeing something. I don't, I personally don't think you're going to have that many people wanting to do this, but I could be wrong.
So there's not, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The need's not there then? Is that what you're saying?
I think the need's there, but how many people want to have a renter on their property? Or, you know, I live in a single-family home, I'm not going to build another house on my lot so I can have a renter.
Do you want to live next door to, a possibility of something going wrong? Just a thought.
On the size requirements items, are you looking for direction from us between the or?
Yeah. So there's two mechanisms that were discussed and tried to put in the words here. The first, the, the second one, which might be the easiest, is if you make a detached building, a detached A D U, 960 is the max under total floor area. Garage, livable area, however you want to mix that together, it's got to be 960 or less, or smaller than the principal. The other is stating that the living, livable area is 960 max, and if you attach it to a garage, that garage is going to be treated as an accessory building at that point. So it's going to be governed by the rules of the accessory building in the zoning ordinance. So what that stops, the, the reason why that was put in place in the first place is because when staff originally put this draft ordinance together, we came up with a bunch of holes that were poking through things, and theoretically, somebody would be able to build an A D U. And we currently don't limit garage size on dwelling units only by setback. So somebody could build an A D U and then build a 2,000 square foot garage attached to their A D U, they're getting an additional accessory building at that point. So our way around that was to treat that accessory garage on the A D U as an accessory building, which would logically make more sense to us as far as regulating that size. So that's that mechanism in place. So you basically have, 960 is your total, no matter what, garage and living, or you can have 960 living plus your accessory building if you have the ability to build it on your lot. And then attached is the same either way, because that still just gives you a max, and we talked about not having them in an attached, because you might just want to turn a room in a house to be an A D U, so.
So if somebody, say somebody was in agriculture conservation, and they have a house, they have a detached garage, and they have a shop or something. So they've already used up their quota of accessory dwellings. So if they built an A D U, they would not be allowed to have an additional accessory building attached to that under the?
Right. So under the top first section, they would not be allowed to build a garage on top of it. Under the second section, they would be able to, but the garage and the A D U would not be allowed to be more than 960.
That one makes more sense to me.
I think the point has been made before that the reason why that second item is an option is because you live in northern Michigan, and nobody likes to go out in the middle of January and brush their car off. And if we're going to treat this as a mother-in-law suite for older folks, that's a huge draw for them to not have to do that. So I think that's why it's being included in the conversation in the first place.
Right. One of the other things that we haven't talked about tonight that was discussed at the last meeting was what zoning districts do we allow A D Us in? All of them? Some of them? Which ones? Um, I think we talked about Lake Residential, which is the, probably the one that has the least number of lots that are conforming, like 30, 30-some percent of the Lake Residential lots are even capable of having an A D U, because the rest of them are non-conforming lots. Um, so I don't know where everyone weighs in on that, but if we want to separate it by zoning types or?
I think that's kind of where we were going with the conditional type of considerations. And I don't, you know, personally, I don't, I don't know if it, maybe, maybe the, the slow roll is just to allow them, and if there's situations that require revisiting, allowing these conditional uses in the future, we could go back, but I think there was some cons, well, people were looking for larger structures on larger lots and stuff of that nature. I think we're starting to get outside the parameters of what our goals and objectives were with this whole situation, when we start looking at those items. Maybe that's stuff we would consider as conditional in the future, but I think initially, I'm, I don't, I don't think it's needed to look at it as, you know, bigger, bigger units.
You think you should allow them on all zoning?
I thi, I, I think, yeah, I think it makes sense to just allow them.
So how, how would that play out in high, high-density residential area or business area? Say in a, in a business area, um, would we allow an A D U next to a grocery store or an office building?
So we currently have accessory dwelling unit to a commercial use in the zoning ordinance. It's currently allowed. So if you own and operate your own business in a local business or general business district, you're allowed to build up to, I think it's 700 square feet attached to your business, and it's going to have a separate entrance. So we currently allow that onto a existing buil, business. There are some single-family residential homes in both of those districts, so that is a consideration to be had. I did separate out the lot area analysis by residential and business districts, because I assumed from our previous conversations, we were talking mostly residential districts to make that change in. But that shouldn't preclude you from doing that if that's what you desire.
And in terms of high, high-density residential, I don't know how you would build an A D U in that situation.
Um, it's, I mean, it's tight, but it's possible, especially if it's attached. But we definitely have less high-density and moderate-density residential districts than most of our other districts, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Just because a building is in a high-density res, I mean, somebody could still build a regular home in a high-density zone district, right? And then pursue that.
Yeah. In high-density and I think moderate, you're allowed to build a single-family and a duplex as a use by right. And then in moderate and high, it's multifamily, it's a conditional and useable. So there's different housing options is the point I'm getting at for those types of districts.
Right. I think that we've thought this through pretty well. I mean, we've spent many months on it, and I think we've discussed just about every possibility. We've looked at some really good examples from other district, other jurisdictions, East Bay, Traverse City, and some of the areas in Grand Rapids. Um, I think, you know, with the exception of the architecturals, I, I think that's the only decision that we have to make yet before we send this out.
Architectural and your, your size, I just want to make sure that I have a clear picture of what you're looking for, whether it be the garage and living mechanism, or just the accessory building and living mechanism.
Yeah. I, I would vote for the garage and living area, item C.
Does staff have a preferred option as far as practically enforcing or reviewing?
From the size perspective?
Yeah. Oh, I mean, like between two A and B or C?
Uh, I think they're both equally enforceable. It's just a matter of how you want to handle that. If you, I mean, if you play it out, if you go with two C option, then 960 is the biggest detached, anything you're going to have regardless of garage size. If you go the two A and B option, then you might have an accessory building that's 1,200 square feet that somebody tacks an A D U onto the back of. So it just depends on how you want the community to look and how you want that A D U to be approached. I mean, from a function standpoint, they both offer the same housing opportunity for a long-term renter, so I guess no, staff doesn't have a preference, at least.
Nope. I would agree with Dan on, um, item two, B and C. Just keeps it simple.
So two C is your preference?
Currently, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, somebody could have a garage that's 960 square feet and have a dwelling area above it?
No, because that would, um, it would exceed the total floor area at that point.
Okay.
And we'll make sure, we'll, if that's your intent, we'll make sure the language is okay with Todd such that it makes it that way. Um, because I can see how you might interpret it that way with the current language, but if that's your intent, we'll make sure that it's legalese correctly.
So ju, just to be?
Sorry, the question that Matt asked that you can hear is if somebody had an existing accessory building under two C, would they be allowed to put an A D U on it? And the answer is no, because your total A D U has to equal 960. So it'd have to be standalone? That's the hiccup.
I don't, I don't remember. There's been so many variations.
Let me ask a question from a very simple mind. I've got a house with a detached garage, I want to put an A D U on top of the garage. Can I do that? So in other words, if, if you had a 25 by 24 garage, and you wanted to put an A D U above it, it would have to be less than 400 square feet.
Unless you interpreted, I mean, you're the one interpreting.
I thought it was just, we would add another accessory building. We, we have that accessory building now, and you have 960 square feet, and you're attached to that.
I think that matches the intent, intent. I think we just have to change the language a bit.
That's where I thought.
If that's what you want to go with, we'll make sure that the language adheres to that.
I think it makes sense.
That's, yeah, that would make sense to me, too. You're already conforming with your garage, so they, that, I mean, you could build the A D, A D U separate from it, and you can still build the 960 that are built over it, right? So what difference does it make?
Right. And it would cost less and have, have less visual impact.
The only other question I had is we've talked numerous times about the short-term rental period of 30 days. That's currently the way the ordinance is written, right? Longer than 30 days?
That's a police power ordinance.
Right.
That specifies less than 30 days rental. It doesn't specify anything longer than that. So we all call it long-term renting, but there's technically not a definition.
Right. Correct.
So at this point, we're looking to? So at this point, we're looking to have this reviewed by legal, then we would look at scheduling a public hearing, is that...
Correct, the last thing I would just like, last clarification on is what zoning districts do you want that to be a part of? So my next steps would be take the architectural standards, reword the size requirements to match our intent, and then if I can just get clarification on the zoning districts you're discussing, put this, putting this in as either a permitted use or a conditional use, then I will take that to legal for review before we have a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment.
Based on our discussion, I think allowing it in all, all zoning makes sense. Cody, if you change the language in the architectural, do you have to run that back by us before you take it to legal?
I don't have to.
Okay.
The only question I have is, is it something they could do in a PUD?
Potentially, probably not. So PUDs that are changed the underlying zoning, they have very strict rules on what they're allowed and not allowed to do. They have a site plan that got approved, and they actually don't belong to any zoning district except that PUD that got approved under that old style of doing a PUD. We now have new, better ways of doing it. The other point, I guess, to that is, PUDs are also a lot of the time set up in a site condo, and a lot of site condos may or may not allow ADUs to begin with. So even though that some of these might be existing conforming lots in, in districts, they might not be allowed to do it from a private deed restriction standpoint, too. So just as a heads up.
So we need a motion or...
Well, so we're, we're looking at right now the language change you talked about with the...
Yep, so my understanding is we're good with the architectural language, we need to adjust the size requirement to be 960 total, and they have the ability to attach to an existing accessory building, and then the only thing I've heard so far is to allow it as a permitted use in each zoning district. Am I tracking?
Did, did, did the committee discuss that as far as which districts to allow it in or...
We did not have conversations about that.
Yeah.
And I think it, I think we might want to exempt planned unit development PUDs, because I think that would just complicate things.
Yeah, it's kind of what I was, when I was looking at that as, they have stricter standards, so it doesn't really make sense to maybe muddy the waters for them. So, so we'd be looking to...
So permitted use in every other district, residential and commercial.
Is that agreeable to all?
Yes.
Okay, I think so. I mean, yeah, we'll see it again, but...
Perfect, yeah, so the process moving forward is to make that text change, send it to the township attorney for review, public hearing has to be noticed in a paper and 15 days ahead of time, and then we'll hold a public hearing where public will be able to make comments, you guys will be able to make any other changes you desire before either approving or denying it to the township board. So it's your process moving forward.
And do we need a motion to send it to the attorney?
Don't technically need it, but it is nice to have for the record, if that's the route you want to go.
I would, I would look for a motion to move this along to the attorney.
I would make the motion, except I'm inexperienced enough not, that I don't usually do it correctly. Max, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to move the draft language for the ADU ordinance on for legal review with amendments to the architectural language we talked about tonight, the building size using paragraph C with some language changes to make it clear that you can't add that to an existing conforming structure in all zoning districts and exempting PUDs.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ba, is there support for the motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to move this along with all the items Max listed and support by Dan. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Then I guess all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So we have three, four, five, five ayes and one nay, motion passes. Moving along, our next item under new businesses, item B, Activity Centers Review and Discussion. Back to this topic. I'll let you go, Cody.
Okay. I was asked to include this in the agenda for the evening to serve as a review and further discussion on this activity center topic. A brief overview is an activity center, subplan was conducted by Networks Northwest on behalf of the township to address three areas that are called out in our master plan, those are the net, North, the West, and the Hamlet Activity Centers. Multiple public meetings were held by Networks Northwest, then generated a subplan which was reviewed by the planning commission and then further the township board. Throughout the winter of '24, '25, the planning commission took a look at addressing those areas to see how quickly and what portions of that subplan they wish to implement. So what I've included for your discussion, aiding, aiding in your discussion today are two maps you've seen before, the North Activity Center and the West Activity Center maps with their current underlying zoning, and then I also included the future, future land use map that's found in our master plan. From our discussions this winter, we had considered approach of treating the North and West Activity Centers as two of the same unit, I guess, and treating them the same and addressing them at the same time. Draft language was put together to try to unify them under, closer to a single zoning district than they currently are. That draft language failed. That draft language also changed the uses that would be allowed in the local business district, and so this is being brought back up tonight to, to talk about further. I guess from staff's perspective, the thing I would, I'd like to comment on is that whenever a master plan or a subplan is put together, there's always this push and pull of how fast of implementation or what kinds of implementation of that plan or subplan are going to, going to occur. So there's, there's a spectrum of, a speed of implementation that we can pull. So we can do something as slow as not making any zoning ordinance change and just having that plan sit in existence and allow property owners to apply for rezonings at the time that they wish to do so. That's the slowest way the township can, can deal with that, is that we don't change anything, we allow the landowner to approach the township when they're ready to change to whatever district they're applying for. The most aggressive spectrum would be to change every single parcel zoning underneath the Activity Centers and restrict the uses to only what's allowed with, inside of the subplan. And I would say that what we talked about previously this year was closer to a faster-moving implementation than not doing anything, obviously. So that's the consideration we have to have moving forward. Just a little bit of background on why changing the underlying zoning was talked about instead of the overlay zone that was proposed by Networks Northwest. Just a reminder, overlay zoning sit on top of current zoning districts, so they usually are used to add more regulation on top of something. So the examples I've used in the past are overlay zones deal with river fronts or historic districts, something where you want to add more regulation regardless of the underlying zoning district. That's not necessarily applicable here because you're not looking to add more zoning restrictions on top of an Activity Center. The, the subplan talks about adding mixed-use development and, and different types of businesses. It's, it's allowing for more uses, so it does the exact opposite. So our discussion on that this winter had moved us to talk about rezoning the underlying zoning district. The future land use map has it all under one zoning district called Activity Centers. We obviously don't have one currently called that, so that was a step in that direction. The other consideration that I would like you to think about today, too, when you talk about this, is when you make a change from a zoning perspective, you also have to consider our infrastructure considerations. So right now, being a mainly bedroom community trying to create a village center, we have roads where, like in the North Activity Center, folks are driving 60 miles an hour down, and we would like to put something with a 10-foot setback there, it doesn't conduct or lend itself to a, a safety perspective. So there's certain portions of the subplan that we have to implement at the correct time in order for that to happen. Also, as a township, we don't have any municipal water or sewer, so some of the things that were listed in the subplan for mixed use require high volumes of water or high capacity for effluent, so they, they might not be conducive to what we currently have. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't change our zoning at some point in the future to reflect that, it's just we have to consider that when those zoning ordinance changes are being proposed. I think that kind of concludes the history and kind of why decisions were made, how they were made, and like I said, I was asked to put this on the agenda for tonight for discussion, so it, it's open, you can ask staff questions or amongst yourselves as far as if and what the planning commission would like to do moving forward in the Activity Centers, whether that's treat them all the same again moving forward as all three, or do nothing, or treat them differently, that's, I guess, where we're at tonight.
Thanks, Cody, I think that was helpful to kind of bring everybody in the room up to speed on, or why we might have gone in a direction we, the direction we did, so I guess now we gotta sort out where we're going from here.
Cody, can you talk a little bit more about how an overlay zone actually plays out in real reality? So basically, what I'm hearing you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, an overlay zone says this is what we intend to do, but we're not changing any zoning this time?
An overlay zone, basically you have two sets of restrictions you have to follow. So let's just, for, I didn't, not single anybody out, but let's take the North Activity Center current zoning map as an example. The parcel that's in yellow on the far west side next to the red block, that's, that's Long Lake School property, so, I'm picking on them because it's easy to pick on an institution. They're currently zoned low-density residential. If we put an overlay zone in that outer pink where that Activity Center is designed, or drawn, they're going to have to follow all the rules in the low-density residential district and all the rules in the overlay zone. So if our overlay zone says, hey, we're looking for mixed-use development, but our low-density residential doesn't allow mixed-use development, now there's a discrepancy in what they're allowed to do in that district. More commonly, an overlay zone is used, there's a, a river there, and we want to protect that river, so somebody will throw an o, somebody, a commission will throw an overlay zone over the top of it saying, you're allowed to build your single-family residence there, but it's got to be an extra 20 feet back, setback-wise, because we want to protect that river. So that's why overlay zones are commonly used in that mechanism, it's to add more regulation on top of an area for a specific reason. So it doesn't really conduct itself well for what the subplan outlines is what's desired.
Thank you.
So a question I have is if, you know, the, the hot topics of the subarea, or that were, the intent, I believe, of what, you know, the subarea plans were to address were items such as architectural standards, you know, size requirements, landscaping, those, things of those nature to kind of enhance the, the area, maybe dissuade certain businesses from locating their, if size requirements were dissuasive to them? What would be simple, the, the simplest mechanisms to get those in place?
Well, here's where the problem resides with just coming from, from that standpoint. So again, taking the North Activity Center, because it's the one that's up here, I see. So let's say you take local business, which is the pink, and you say, you know what, for a conditional land use, we're taking the 75,000 square, 7,500 square foot limit, we're putting it down to 5,000 square foot, so that now anybody who wants to build a bigger business and that has to come in front of the planning commission, and you're going to compare that against the master plan and that set of standards we looked at earlier for conditional land use. That's fine and dandy, but there's a piece of property right across the road that's in low-density residential that, well, I guess it doesn't... I guess the point I'm trying to make is it doesn't, the, the way you would limit that is based on use more than it would be the restrictions that are put in there. The, the Dollar General that went in, their normal store footprint is much greater than 7,500 square feet, but they changed their typical size so that they didn't have to come in front of you to get conditional land use approval. So if you changed it to 5,000 square feet, the, a business is just going to conform to that new standard in order to fit there, I, I guess is my point. I mean, you can make it super restrictive, but then every time something gets built, it's going to come in front of you for a conditional land use approval, and then you're going to have to state a reason why you're not going to allow it there if you're not going to allow it there. So the Suttons Bay tried to do that with something didn't meet the character of the village, it's, it's very loosey-goosey, I guess, there's not a rigorous, consistent scrutinization of whatever business it be. The seven of you folks on the planning commission this year might not want a certain business to come in because it doesn't meet the master plan, but three years down the road, the same business applies on a little different parcel, and the seven folks there do think could, I don't know, that's, I guess, the, the reason being. The other portion of that is there's not one zoning district that fills a complete Activity Center, all three Activity Centers have multi-zoning underneath them. So if you make a change in local business, you're only affecting half of the Activity Center, not the full, in the instance of the North, and then a third in the West and none in the Hamlet. So there's not a conducive way to treat, the master plan is treating the North Activity Center as a single entity. Our zoning ordinance is treating it as four entities right now, so that we're not being equitable across the board, I guess, is the point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you make that change, that affects every parcel in the township, not just the ones in the business district.
The 5,000 square foot?
If you change the zoning for...
Correct, so if you change the zoning for low-density, low-density residential and Activity Centers, you're changing it for low-density residential everywhere else. Correct. So that's why when we discussed this previously, we said, well, how can we address just the Activity Centers how they are, and mentioned, well, the only way to truly do that is to have a single unified zoning. Well, you'd be changing, in this instance, four different zoning districts and their boundaries in order to do that, which, again, is a faster or heavier end of the spectrum of speed of implementation, and, yeah.
We talked about creating a separate zoning district, is that correct?
We talked about using the local business and changing the underlying uses, because the only places that you find local business currently in the township are in the North Activity Center and the West Activity Center.
Okay. So as a potential solution, change the zoning in the yellow parcels to make them pink?
Sure, that's a potential.
And then change the ordinance to, because it sounds like really we're trying to align uses is really what we were trying to do.
Right. By doing that, you're affecting and making a lot of properties existing non-conforming most likely, based on what's currently on the ground.
Right.
So, but again, if you're, when we were looking at that, one of the items that came up was rezoning and then an alignment of uses, those are the two big... Those are the two big topics that we were discussing.
Right.
Doing that and doing that in one fail swoop is a big step. It's a, it's a, it's a big implementation step. There are ways to do it smaller. Either you try to align the uses now in local business and don't change the underlying zoning, and then, you know, the 50% that currently reside in the Activity Center have that. But at the same time, you've got to pick which uses to do because you can't necessarily allow for a mixed-use development. No developer's going to come into Long Lake Township and build a mixed-use development because there's places in the region where it's easier to do and they have access to municipal water and sewer to do so. So we might allow it to come here, but it's not, it's just not going to happen.
So would a potential start be to look at uses in the local business district to try and conform that to what our vision of the Activity Centers is?
Yep, and that's, that is part of the original zoning ordinance amendment we had this spring. In the meeting, that draft language was changed to not adopt any rezoning and only change those uses in the local business, and that failed to pass at the time.
Right.
Whether that be because too many uses changed or whatever the reasoning was, it doesn't matter, it didn't pass. So moving forward, then it would just have to be changes of uses that the majority of you could agree on, that the local business districts would need to change in them.
Yeah, I think that we were questioning some of the uses that we had talked about at the time, and that's the reason it failed. But I think we could certainly revisit that and come up with something that everyone agrees on as far as the uses in that local business district and try and get that enacted. I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but it seems like...
What are the thoughts on having another workshop? There's a lot of unanswered questions.
A workshop of the whole board or like a subcommittee?
That'd be the, whatever the direction the board would want to take with that.
I mean, I think we're...
Whatever your thoughts are, Bob.
My personal thoughts are that, you know, it's something that we can tackle as a group in regular meetings and, you know, it's not, it's not a, an item that is where we have a deadline to meet or anything like that. It's, I mean, we can discuss it as agendas allow and, you know, take a topic and go through it.
Well, it's been two years, you know, it's been since the onset of it, just, I don't know. The residents spoke, they want it, just like to move forward with it. Or we come up with a list and try to work through it before the meeting. It just seems like it's mismatched. I guess the bottom line is it'd be nice to get it moved forward.
I think that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to not rush it.
I wonder if it would make sense to choose one of these areas as a pilot program to work it out and implement it in a way that would be measured. What I'm thinking about is the north Activity Center because there are going to be some really significant changes in that area in the next few years. Once that peanut goes in place, it's going to change how that area is used, what the traffic looks like. And it seems like if we chose that as a, as a pilot program and worked, implemented just there, I think it's not such a big bite, and we can do it in a more sensible and measured way, more sensitive way possibly. What are the ramifications of that, Cody?
No, that's a logical approach.
I don't disagree with that, but I think if you're just looking at local business district, I think you could include both of those. I mean, we kind of already have said that the Long Lake, one doesn't really fit into the category that the other two do anyway. There's, but I think you could do either. I was thinking, in my opinion, go back to the uses that we had on the list that we had tried to change or were going to change in our meeting before and put that on the pamphlet for next meeting and revisit those and take another look at those and come prepared to which ones you agree with and which ones you don't.
You know, we've had so many conversations around this in the last year, and there are a number of, as an example, you know, at one time, we talked about reducing the size, the maximum size of a building to 5,000-square-feet. And as I recall, your response was, "Well, an investor that wants to build a box store can simply come in and apply for a conditional permit and bring their attorneys and sue the township, and they're going to get what they want anyway." Am I incorrect in that summary of what I heard you say?
I might, I don't remember what I said verbatim, but just lowering the limit to what the threshold is to justify a conditional land use doesn't stop a business from coming in. It just makes it more difficult on them to achieve. That's why when the Dollar General came in, they built their store to 7,500-square-feet. That way, they didn't have to come before you to get approval to use that use of the land. So if you're going to lower that to 5,000-square-feet, you're not stopping something from coming in. You're just telling them that you have another hurdle to jump through, and you've got to come before the seven of you and get approval to do so. So that doesn't stop a business. The only way to truly stop a use of a land is to take that use out of that district. Otherwise, that use is allowed in some fashion. Whether the seven of you deny a use, you know, next month, and then five years from now, somebody comes in and that use gets approved, there's not, you're not truly stopping it. I guess that was my main point to it.
And the fact is that if, if some big corporation really wanted a big store here, and that was one of their chief goals under current zoning, it probably would happen.
Potentially. I mean, we have, and both of our business districts have a use called general retail establishment. It's a pretty broad definition for somebody to claim that their store is a general retail establishment. So regardless of what the threshold is for a CLU, somebody would be able to theoretically apply for and achieve the ability to do so.
And actually, changing from general business to local only impacts three, two or three parcels on the west?
It's five.
It is, oh, it's five? Okay.
Does anybody else have any burning comments or questions?
Can't say what I thought.
So what I'm hearing is maybe start with looking at the uses and kind of go back to, I guess...
I don't mind bringing you guys uses. We can go through that exercise again. The question that staff's going to have for you, and the thing that I'm having trouble totally understanding, and I think maybe some of the public is trying to understand as well, is what is your guys' intent with these areas moving forward? Is your intent to make it like the subarea plans call for, where there is high-density, high-intense use with mixed-use residential? And if that is, that's fine. At what speed do you want to get there? So the reason why I ask those questions is because I've preached before that the, the way zoning ordinances need to be written is with a clear intent, they need to be practical, and they need to be enforceable. Those are the three pillars that we need to achieve anytime we try to make a zoning ordinance change. So if we don't have a real, clear intent on what our end goal is moving forward, we're not going to be able to achieve that. So that may be one of the reasons why we've had issues in the past or a misalignment of uses or what have you. But we need to understand what our final intent is going to be, and then we need to decide how fast you want to achieve that. There's a potential that the subarea plan comes to complete fruition in 20 years just by allowing property owners to apply for that rezoning and changing local business district uses to meet that. There is also the possibility that you guys decide to change every single underlying parcel in those areas and change, enforce that change to happen in two years. So the question becomes, at what speed do you want to do it? The peanut roundabout that Commissioner Paulson mentioned may or may not come to fruition. The township does not have control over that decision. The Road Commission does, and they've stated before that they don't have the funds to complete that unless they get it from the feds, which is currently in application. We won't know the answer to until October. And if that happens, we won't have a shovel in the ground until '27 or '28. So there are some things that are just flat-out out of our control. So when we're looking at clear intent, we need to make sure that we're communicating not only to staff, but more importantly, residents, and then to other adjoining communities, what is our intent with that area so that the Road Commission knows that, "Hey, we're going to have a high intensity of use in the next five years. It's important that that intersection gets fixed." We just need to make sure that that's clear. I think that would go a long way, from my office especially, but from residents as well, understanding what your end goal is going to be. Is your end goal to achieve the subarea plan in five years, 20 years? Like, that is an important factor to understand.
So Cody, you're saying with the peanut at the north Activity Center, we would be getting an answer as to whether there's funding in about a year?
Uh, no, in October.
October. Well, that would change the complexion of everything. If the funding weren't available, it may put it off for...
Another year. We could wait another grant cycle.
But the other side of that is that if we presented a coherent plan to the Road Commission, it might influence their decisions.
Do they listen?
I don't know.
I could tell you stories.
Yeah.
Fortunately, when somebody, when something happens at that intersection, then they'll start listening. And that's coming. That is just so dangerous down there.
Well, the same thing happened at the intersection of M-72 and Goodrick Road. There were four people killed there within a year. I called the Road Commission and said, "You have to do something. We need a stoplight there." And verbatim, their response was, "Ain't going to happen." But within a year, there was a stoplight there. However, I would hate to see the Road Commission put a couple of stoplights in the north Activity Center as opposed to a peanut because then whatever plan the township has expressed that they want goes away. And I think for us to preemptively present a plan to the Road Commission makes a lot of sense if we want to get what the township has said they want.
And maybe for better or for worse, I use the road as an example, but I guess my point is if we can, if the commission can be more clear on what its intent is, it helps everybody else make decisions on what they're going to do. It helps property owners know if they're going to be able to do, if somebody holds a piece of property and they're contemplating opening X-business in two years, but they don't know if the zoning is going to constitute that, or build something in two years, but they don't know if our zoning is going to change. They have a hard time either holding on to it or selling it, or whatever their desired use of their property is. It's just, we need to be more clear and upfront about what our intent and what speed we would like to achieve that moving forward so that folks understand how do you handle their business.
That makes sense. So we don't want to lose business either.
Right, because you don't want to steer somebody away because if your intent is to bring the subplan together in three years, you don't want to steer somebody away because they don't think it's going to happen for 20 years, or vice versa. If you don't want to do it for 20 years, it's just being transparent and upfront with the community is going to go a long way for them understanding your decision process and then also understanding how they're going to use their property.
So maybe we need to pull out the subarea plan and look at it with fresh eyes at the beginning. How does that...
Makes sense to me.
Maybe that'll help us kind of formulate what we're doing. I mean, because we have purpose and intent stated in those plans, we just...
And that's fine if that's what you want to align with, but then the next question staff's going to ask you is, "At what speed do you want to implement that?" Because we can help you with the ordinance language to get there, but we need to know whether or not we're going to change underlying zoning, and if you don't want to do that, it's fine. We need to know which district you want to change uses and that type of thing so that we have an idea of, not even the specifics, but as far as, again, what your, your speed of intent is going to be so that we can help you do that. Otherwise, we're going to either take a swing that's too big, or we're going to take a swing that's too small, and we're not going to be aligned in the ordinance language that's presented to you versus what you're actually trying to accomplish.
That's where I think a workshop or some type of, maybe another ad hoc committee. The residents spoke, we know what they want, and to change from that at this point, I mean, I can see a couple of areas that might need to be tweaked a little bit, but we've spent a lot of time on this, months.
Just from a, I know I wasn't asked, and sorry, shut me down if you've been speaking out of turn, but from a plan's perspective and a planning profession, we're required by the state to have a master plan and touch it every five years. That said, master plans look at the township from a full perspective, and when you have a subarea plan, it is incorporated into that. So technically, we have one master plan that has a subsection called Activity Centers. That being said, not everything in a master plan is going to be implemented, period, but also stuff in a master plan isn't going to be implemented in that five years that we're required to touch it by the state. Plans can change. They often do, and they also need to adapt as times move forward. The other issue that master plans are notorious for is we try, as planners, to bring as much public participation as possible. Well, we are a township of 10,000 residents, and at most for our master plan and subarea plan, we have a fraction of those people being represented. So what your commission and the township board is tasked with doing is trying to understand what's best for the 10,000 residents by only hearing a voice of X-number of people. So understanding that that is your guiding and your framework, putting things to the letter of your plan, whether it be the subplan or the master plan, is going to take some massaging and figuring out to do. So unfortunately or fortunately, the seven of you are tasked with doing that, and then the township board gets their say in the matter. So I don't take that for what it is, but I always would caution you that resident participation is important, but remember, we have 10,000 residents, not 250 residents.
Does anybody have any thoughts on speed to move forward? I mean...
Commissioner Paulson earlier made a comment about a pilot project and taking slow, measured steps. Is that agreeable amongst the seven or six of you tonight to have that approach? Because that's going to look like a much different use discussion than it is to match the subplan.
I'm in agreement with that. I'm okay with that.
This is my very first Planning Commission meeting tonight, so, you know, I'm coming into this open-minded, but I certainly don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I do think where Max was going is maybe a more...
I do think where Max was going is maybe a more manageable approach might be to look at the uses within the zoning districts that are most concerning. You know, if the idea is to try and do something, even if it complicates the process to keep, you know, whatever you want to call them, perceived undesirable uses from, from coming in, I think that would be an easier path to follow to try and affect what I've heard is, you know, from the things that reach the township board level, the types of specific uses. But the other thing that, you know, certainly was very much part of the initial conversation was the intensity of the uses, the traffic in particular. So, you know, what folks are calling the north district, that's what kind of kicked off the first moratorium. So, you know, now here we are, years later with not a whole lot to show for it. So my initial reaction would be, maybe we should be looking at the uses within the specific zoning districts. Not to say that you couldn't even do this in, in parallel or in tandem, but at the same time, I know staff's resources are limited, the board's resources are limited. You don't want to be talking about all this stuff theoretically. So I think maybe that should be part of the first discussion is just a go-no-go. Do you want to continue down this path with the subarea or do you want to just maybe head down this different path? Maybe I'm reading into what you were suggesting a little too much there, Max, but.
No, I think in my mind, that's the only way you're going to control those uses that you don't want is by changing the uses of that district.
Previously, staff presented you with the local business district and its uses and the definitions within and any of the stipulations. Is there a different, I mean, I can provide you with that same information and we could have a, an updated conversation about that. Is there additional information or different information that would help make your decision than something we've looked at previously? Or would you like the same information that you looked at this spring?
I don't think I need any additional information and I probably have the information from the last meeting. So it's just revisiting that and making sure those are the right decisions. I think we started questioning ourselves on that.
I can pull that information forward. That takes very little staff time to do, so you're not taxing staff that hard on that particular option?
All right. I like that approach. I think the, if we look at it, if we look at a, you know, case study or that north area, I think when we're talking about uses, we're not going to be blind to what might happen in the west area either. So I, I think it'll, it'll work itself out, but maybe we're, maybe we're more focused on the north and, you know, let's start with the uses, I think, like we talked about. I think the time from when we originally looked at those in January or whatever it was and then, you know, input we've gotten from our public hearing this spring, I think will be informative as we look at those again, even though there's maybe not new information, it'll be viewed in a different perspective.
Okay. I agree with that.
Is that?
I can bring you that information.
Is that direction? Is there anything else anybody else wants to bring up about this topic at this time? All right. I think it's just a discussion item, so I think we know what's on tap next. So we will move on from item 10B and we are at our second public comment period. Anybody can talk to us again for three minutes? Got to take her.
Hey. I was just wondering, you guys were talking about how you wanted to go from like 7,500 square feet down to 5,000 square feet per building. What's it?
Oh.
Oh, I'm Adam Worth, owner of the storage facility.
Sorry, name and address is, you weren't here for the first one. You've been here before.
Right. Adam Worth, owner of the, or the storage facility over at Relox. Just you guys were talking about going from, you know, 7,500 to 5,000 square feet, reducing it. Just in, you know, general, if you keep reducing the size of the building that you're going to put up, that could be residential or commercial or whatever, you need a certain amount of envelope of property to put that 5,000 square foot on. You'd be kind of almost creating like an urban sprawl type thing where now you've got to have more acreage to put certain amount of square footage of building in that general area. So you would, you know, kind of almost create like a larger, you know, business area or commercial area or something. So you're kind of almost creating like an urban sprawl type thing, which most people I think don't want to create that because then you're causing more, you know, traffic issues, distance traveled, more miles on the road on the vehicles and all that stuff. So I would think that maybe you want to go, you know, if you went with a larger building, if somebody was going to use two 5,000 square foot buildings, wouldn't it be more wise to put it in a 10,000 square foot building so it's smaller area? You can build up to 12,000 square feet without having to worry about anything with fire code and stuff and fire suppression and that. So just a thought to think about, maybe reducing that size is going to create another issue in the future. So just a thought.
Thank you, Adam.
I'm Sonny Wheelock. I own Wheelock and Sun Welding at 9954 North Long Lake Road. First of all, I want to address the ADU discussion. Over the past 20 years, I've literally chaired or participated in 100 minimum committees that talked about affordable housing. The number one simplest way to provide affordable workforce housing in anybody's community is accessory dwelling units, hands down. It's by far the easiest, cheapest and simplest way to address affordable housing. Okay. The second please, we'll talk about a little bit the commercial zoning. To the best of my knowledge, Long Lake Township still only has two classes of commercial property, is that correct? You know, in 1978, when the township was originally zoned, there was one class for commercial property. It was commercial industrial. There was two parcels total, one on M-72 and one that I still own a good part of. Along the way, we've developed this local commercial thing. The problem is we, we need to figure out if we're going to try to pass regulations that will fit all of the local commercial, we better look at the different kinds of local commercial we have. That's why most communities have multiple classes of commercial property because there's a whole lot of difference between John's Traffic at Rumors and the clock shop across the road from my shop. You know, if you're truly trying to address commercial property and how you regulate it, you need to look at the commercial property that you have, the uses that are being used there, and then come up with a plan. You very well might, may find that you're going to want a different set of requirements for the commercial property, whether it's in the north district, the west district, if it's over on M-72. You're going to have to look at all the commercial uses you have and decide what requirements or what regulations you want to set on those. The subplan that we made reference to earlier and we've made reference to all evening, one of the key pieces of that subplan for the west district said no zoning requirements or no rezoning was recommended. Absolutely. Read the, read the final report. It tells you no rezoning was required. The only thing that I had a problem with, and Cody and I talked about it right after it happened, was the, was the reduction of the size of the buildings. You know, if I want to, if I want to put in a new powder coat line, I want to expand my powder coat line, it cannot happen at 5,000 square feet. A pre-wash system is going to take me about 8,000 square feet if I want to put in a, in a wash system. You know, it, it can't work in 5,000 square feet. So when you're looking at commercial property, first look at the uses you have and then talk about what kind of regulations you want to set forth moving forward. But you can't do it with a commercial industrial district and a local commercial district and that's the only two jurisdictions you have.
Anybody else? All right. Close that public comment period. Seven thirty-seven. Reports, Township Board. Dan, welcome. You get to give us your first Township Board report.
Thank you. I'll move it forward. I'll try and take a little better notes, but the things that do come to mind from our last meeting, we had our annual review of the audit, which has, every year that I can recall anyway, has been the case. We've basically got a clean bill with no concerns raised by our auditor, so that's good news. We talked a fair amount about the short-term rental ordinance, a few different, I guess, modifications to the language that, that we talked to our staff about primarily. Just, you know, as that ordinance has been adopted, I think in large part it's really served the community well, but it's like anything and we're running into the same stuff as you folks are wrestling through the ADU stuff. You know, it's requiring modifications and massaging. The big thing that's, that we talked about the most on that is the enforcement of deed restrictions. Some folks in the community would like to see the township take that on. I, I really don't see us headed in that direction. But one of the things that did come out of that discussion is a suggestion that at least be the applicants be reminded through the, through the review process and the application process that they are beholden to satisfy their own deed restrictions if they exist. So that's the direction that I do see us heading on that particular topic. Also move forward with some plans to make some improvements to some phone system upgrades here at the township office and some of our expanding facilities. And we gave a supervisor some direction on moving forward with the demolition of one of the, I guess technically it was being referred to as the cabin, but it really hasn't been used as such in quite some time. It's in need of a substantial amount of repair and that's going to be removed. So that's about it.
Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
ZBA, Max.
You can credit Matt probably for this, but the ZBA's been pretty quiet the last year. We did not have a meeting last month and it sounds like we don't have a meeting next month, so, which means that people, in my mind, it means that people know whether or not they're going to, going to be successful in asking for a variance and we're not getting a, we're not getting all those people paying the $500 and asking for a variance that aren't going to get it.
All right. Planner update report. Cody, you got?
Yeah, I got two items for you tonight. The first is congratulations, you're all members of the Michigan Association of Planning. That's something that we do for all of our commission members and our ZBA members, so you guys have access to their resources. I did call and talk to our representative just to make sure I had a clear understanding of what that meant because I was provided with that invoice and didn't realize we, we did that. So I presented the pamphlet for you today. They have a lot of educational opportunities for you. They have some conferences and such. If you'd like to join, I would encourage you to check it out and if you have questions on that, let me know. We'll get you squared away. Very similar to the citizen planner course that we offered this spring. They offer a bunch of hour-long classes and just deepen your understanding of how the zoning enabling and planning acts work for you. So that's all on that. The second topic was the tree preservation ad hoc committee. We had our first meeting on July 9th. You saw the minutes earlier. I was just going to let you know that as moving forward, we're going to have a meeting. I'm hoping to schedule here in August to continue. And the end goal of those continued meetings will be to present to full commission with a summary of your reports that you can use for your implementation of the natural features inventory that is hopefully going to be completed here in the next six months or so. That is my update for tonight.
Thanks, Cody. Correspondence, we had, as presented on our tables tonight and noted when we approved the agenda, email from Chris Crew. Could not be here to provide it in public as she usually does, so we have that. We don't have to do anything else with it other than.
No, it's just listed as an item, don't make you aware of it.
Commissioner comments? Sherry? Dennis?
Hi. Good.
Just again, welcome, Dan. Sorry I failed to mention that at the beginning of the meeting, but looking forward to having you as part of this commission. And that's all I got. So we're at item 15 adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Bott, support by Murphy to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.